So this is done.
Hey, by the way.
No, I call them.
Anthony, I have, uh...
He doesn't show, I'm saying I want some cookies.
I want dips on wine.
I was already here and already took a bite out of each one. I licked them.
Okay, I get binnies.
No, Rose already claimed binnies.
Well, you know what? I'll have two. Or you can have two of Don's and then you can give the one after.
Anthony claims he licked all of Don's, so I can't have any of them.
Call to order. Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Ken Delora.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Armin.
Here.
Councilor Caprio. Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Fawnin.
Here.
Councilor Fuji. Councilor Rose.
Here.
We have a motion to approve the minutes from the September fifteenth, two thousand fifteen WPC and Town Council Agenda.
So move.
Second with the following corrections. Under item thirteen D, the motion should read, um, for an appropriations transfer as submitted. And under item F, on the same page, the motion should read to approve tax refunds as submitted.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Angeloni with the changes noted. Roll call.
Mayor Ken Delora.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Armin.
Epstein.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Water exclusion control authority agenda, item three, no new business, regular town council meeting, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Item A, permanent project building committee.
We should have all received by email that Mike sent out as requested, the work schedule that was, um, in place at the time the project started. It's the graph thing, um, and also permanent project is meeting the nineteenth. They... Not next week because of the holidays, so they're not meeting until the nineteenth to review that progress. They have started putting the panels on, but it's a slow go because there's not a large crew there. From my understanding, they're, um, a lot of their crew, or a number of their crew, is larger down at Yale. So we basically have a skeleton crew.
What is the leak situation?
There's still some leaks during the rain, but I guess until the roof is completely on. I mean, they do address them and look at them, but it's... There's still some leaks that happened over this past weekend with the rain that we had, but they are addressing them.
So based on the fact, is it a small crew? When do they anticipate finishing?
They're probably a minimum of three to four weeks out. I know they didn't have a job meeting this past week, correct, Michael?
Right.
Right, so their next job meeting should be Thursday of this week.
To avoid this from happening again, what can we change in the wording in a contract to say something more clear than, you know, mostly done?
Well, if it's a tight contract like Al had suggested, you do time is of the essence, um, in the contract?
Mm-hmm. And then how do you evaluate what a majority of the work is done?
You reviewed that contract, correct? So what?
As far as I know, um, you know, this is the... Once again, this is the architect's determination of what's timely or what's not timely in accordance with the terms of that contract.
So can we avoid this vagueness from now on? Is that possible? I don't know.
Well, it's interpretation of the...
Well, absolutely. It starts from the contract from the beginning, the way it's written.
All construction contracts have the clause in there for substantially complete.
Right.
There's no way that anybody in the construction world would say it's substantially complete today.
Right.
Not August twenty-first, and we probably should have fined them August twenty-first. That language was in there. So having said that, when did we hire the architect to be our god?
Right.
Right.
I don't remember that. So how did he become god and decide what's substantially complete when everybody else in the construction world knows it's not substantially complete?
Yeah, we followed the same process we did for...
Not we followed the same process. We voted... We vote to put him in charge.
Yeah, I believe it was the decision of the permanent project building committee.
It was permanent project.
Yeah, whether it came for a vote here, I'll have to go look at the minutes, but I know permanent project did the same and followed and voted to follow the same process they did on the previous.
And they gave them another check.
Yeah, but we, at our previous council meeting, I remember Al's concern of front-loading the job.
We reviewed and voted on the contract, right?
Right, but we also voted not to pay them, and then another payment was issued.
For two hundred and ninety of them.
Well, we paid the... That what was already processed, and there's still that bulk of six hundred or thereabouts, or eight... Almost eight hundred, I think. No, six hundred, um, left in the balance that has not been authorized until we see, you know, performance.
And what type of bond do they have? Just insurance?
I think they have a...
I'm sure they have hold on.
Yeah.
I think the permanent project building committee has their own attorney. I agree with Al's analysis, but I may... I'm just reflexively answering that I must have looked at that contract, but now that I think of it, I don't know.
They do not unless we give them authorization to hire one.
Well, don't they have... What's his name in North Haven?
Yeah, they do.
Only if the council approves them to hire them.
They would have to request that, or indicate that they want to use and bring it to the council for approval to go to...
Or anything that they want to have done.
So...
Correct.
The town council didn't vote then to approve this? I thought it was going nuts, this architect, is anything. The building committee did.
Well, they... Right, they approved, but I think the contract that we looked at or had John look at, I came to the council for...
To answer your question, Dan, and for the first ten or twelve years that I was on the town council, and I'm going back to nineteen eighty-nine, the town council acted as the building committee. And I truly believe that we get through this election, whoever's sitting up here need no disrespect to the people that are serving on the building committee, but they don't have to raise the money. And I'm gonna... I'll be quite frank with you. You know, this council here had me and Don Fuzzi that deal with contracts all the time in construction for millions of dollars, and they... We wasted that expertise, and I honestly think that it should come back here and the town council should act as the building committee because we have to raise the money and we have to answer the public, and we're getting blamed on the street for the roof not being done.
Right.
So that's just, you know, the next town council really needs to look at how they go forward with projects.
This can't happen again. And now we're limited as to what we can really do. I mean, we're a month and a half overdue.
Unless, again, unless you start fining them, the thousand dollars a day, that roof would be done in a heartbeat.
Well, maybe we need to address... Maybe we need to consider that then.
Well, we've got our...
Get rid of the skeleton.
Building committee's appointed architect telling us it was substantially complete on August twenty-first, and that's what John said was our downfall.
That's the problem, right.
So anyway, that's really what, you know, going forward, I agree with that, we have to do something different. But I think at this point, Rose, I mean, where are you guys at with the building committee?
Well, I mean, they... At the last building committee, they requested the schedule. They wanted the one that... It's the graph that says where the projects are at certain points in time. So they have received that also, and now they don't meet until the nineteenth, and they said they were not going to process any more payments until they receive that, and they're going to be discussing it at the next project meeting. Now, I guess my question is, do they have the authority to impose the thousand dollar a day penalty if they want? Okay.
So who has to do that?
Oh, well, I think you have to come to the council for that. That's a lawsuit. I mean, that's a lawsuit in the making. Problem is, our agent, the architect, whose authority is imputed to us and vice versa, has came here and appeared on council and said that they were substantially in compliance and complete.
You didn't read the contract before you even came here.
Well, that's... He's our agent.
Well, that was the fun... That was the sad thing. He knew he was coming here to talk about it, and he stood up there, said they were substantially complete, and that he hadn't looked at the contract in two months. How would you... As a town... We're paying this guy?
And two weeks later, at the building committee meeting...
What are we paying this guy?
Please, whatever is in the... It's a percentage, I think.
Percentage of project, no doubt.
Yeah, is my guess.
And now, obviously, they have no incentive to get this job done because we have leaks and we have a skeleton crew. What are we gonna do to expedite this process? Not have a skeleton crew, but get everybody back here from New Haven and get this job done? That's two months overdue.
Architects carry errors and omission insurance. Is that just on their drawings, or is it in their ability to understand what's substantially complete or not? Maybe we need to sue him.
Well, certainly it covers more than just their drawings. It covers their conduct, and if it's negligent or anything of that nature, they could be liable for that. But this is a subjective call. I'd like to hear from the man again, and since this is sounding more and more like litigation, I think it's a proper subject for executive session. And we ought to invite, or actually command, the architect to...
What was the penalty? Was it a thousand dollars a day for being late?
Yes.
Thousand dollars a day after August twenty-first if it was not substantially complete.
Let's put it in perspective. What we're talking about, if they finish by the end of October, is about a sixty thousand dollar claim. Even if you sue him for an omission, our loss is the failure to collect those contractual damages, which will total about sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so that's all you go after.
And then getting the job done.
And it would cost us a hundred.
Well, the other thing is, if we... If... I'm reluctant to discuss this, but if we were to go against the architect, it would essentially be for negligence, and the question is, what are our damages?
The sad thing is, though, John, I sat here September first and said, you know what? They're gonna be done October first. The fastest and best way to do it is just let it go. So now we're in October, and I gotta say again, the fastest and best way to get this roof done is just keep going.
Yeah, I mean, they're there every day.
And again, take the... Go to Dan's point as to going forward, we gotta dot our i's and cross our t's over there.
How many guys are out there, Rose?
Um, most days, it's been three or four.
Yeah, I mean, there's...
I mean, the whole front administrative wing, which, you know, they still have to put all the... Not all, but a good portion of the metalwork up for the pitch roof before they can put the panels on, they haven't worked on that section in weeks because they're... With the crew that they have, they're putting the panels up on the gym, which still isn't done. They've started, you know...
Let me ask you. Do they have the product, like the structure onsite, to go up, and then there isn't the staff to put it up? Or they haven't... I remember...
They don't have all the panels.
Right, I remember that was gonna be part of the issue, is that they were gonna have a delivery issue with the panels. But is there product on the ground that should be up on the roof that isn't up on the roof because we don't have staff members to put it up on the roof?
I don't know. I think that's the case. I think that's the case that was indicated, just said, that they're trying to pull a shortage of metalworkers and trying to pull off New Haven or wherever they can pull to get on this site to get the work done. And I don't think it's an issue of a shortage of panels. I think the panels are there to...
So we just need the people to do the job that they've been paying to do.
I think it's right, a shortage of manpower, I believe.
I don't know.
How often is the architect onsite?
I mean, I see him when he comes for the weekly meetings.
That's about it?
On Thursdays, I... You know, he may come to the job site during the day.
So you don't... We don't know how often he's...
And just be up on the roof that, you know, we don't see him.
So we have no idea how often he's...
I doubt it, but that could be a possibility.
So that could be a problem, too. We don't know how often he's checking in.
Mike, who attends the job meetings?
Michelle Knackwood. I've been attending the last couple, ever since, you know, we've been through this issue, and as Rose said, we didn't have one last week based on that forecast of hurricane condition.
But I mean, from day one, who's been attending the meetings?
Michelle and Tom Hibbert with Titan, and I know there's been... The principal has been there pretty much every meeting, and again, I can't say for, you know... Because I just started attending after this issue was raised, to deliver the message that this is important, that time is of the essence, and we gotta wrap this thing up. Bill Choody, I think, has been coming through, whoever the school system has been sending in to do that. I believe, you know, whoever else...
You can just look on the weekly job.
Look on the minutes, it'll show the attendance.
And it tells you who's there. Through the summer, there wasn't too much from the Board of Ed side at the meeting.
And all these people, it's not their responsibility to express what the concrete... You know, what's in the contract and what these people have to adhere to, other than the fellow that we hired, right? Who's... Hasn't read the contract. Am I right about that, or what? I mean...
And he probably still hasn't because at the building committee meeting, when he was asked if he reviewed the contract yet, because the council, you know... This was in September, when the council talked to him, two weeks later was building committee meeting, and I asked him if he had read the contract because he told us he hadn't, and we gave him time. At that point, he still had not read the contract.
Well, okay. Anybody? I don't know. That's very frustrating.
It is.
Why we're paying him, I'd like to know.
Sometimes you don't know what you get, you know?
Well, now we know.
When you find out, it's too late, too.
Well, I would think with the job meetings, having the same nucleus of people going to these meetings, you'd have the continuity you'd have, you know, know what's going on. We had to know there was a problem two months ago.
More than that, even.
Or three months ago.
Right.
And, you know, it probably should have been addressed then. And Mike, can you dig up who is the owner of Titan Roofing?
Sure.
Okay.
See you in November.
You're right, to be continued, right?
It's gonna start getting cold.
And wet and leaky.
So...
That's it for permanent project.
Oh, I just had one other, just on the Stanley T. Williams, progressing to try and wrap that up and also get the three security lights from Penn Globe. They're doing an assessment this week and next, and we hope to have what their recommendation is in terms of those locations and then be able to install those lights. So that'll be in October. Again, we're trying to wrap this up for the December first. That's it for me.
So getting back on the roof for just a minute, you know, maybe we... And John may, you know... Well, I don't know. Maybe we have to look at calling the bond. You know, no contractor wants their bond called because they're not gonna get one again. So maybe we look at that.
No town wants to get taken advantage of like this either.
But it would all be expensive, and again, the fastest way, even with four guys there, fastest and cleanest way to get the roof done is to have the four guys working there.
Just let it be.
Unfortunately. John?
It's a bad place to be.
Item B, economic development commission.
They did not meet last night in lack of form.
Item C, park and recreation.
Park and recreation met, and we had an extensive discussion in regards to the concept that Connecticut Sportsplex has presented, and we're just still pursuing that. And they also talked about the dog park. Eric Hodgson's was there along with another rep from North Branford Unleashed. So there's a subcommittee that was formed that's going to be talking to give a little bit more clearer idea of a possibility of where the dog park would go so that they can continue to seek donations and move forward with it. And they were also doing interviews for the recreation supervisor, which is later on our agenda for discussion. And the next meeting is the nineteenth.
Item D, police commission.
The police commission meets next Tuesday, the thirteenth, because of the holiday.
Item E, fire commission. Fire commission met last week. There are, I think, several topics that I think are important. One is company three. I believe they want to put together a walkthrough with the chief, town manager. They asked me to attend as liaison in regards to some of the problems they're having with the roof up there. There's also a discussion about the fire training facility. I have to say, the morale is very high. A lot of the captains were at this meeting and a lot of volunteers, and my understanding is the foundation has gone out to bid, and that looks good, and we'll be moving forward. And I believe the next step, they're looking for... Not sure if the RP went out yet, but they're looking to get the erector to erect the structure.
Right, the first half of the site work, if you will, has been bid and awarded.
Right.
Second half has been bid out, waiting for the award.
Right.
So everything's on track.
Right. There also was, you know, lengthy discussion regarding dispatch and communications. Part of it has to do with the move to MedCon. You know, there have been some bumps in the road, and the chief, you know, is addressing them. Unfortunately, I think unfortunately, they still have first electmen and mayors that are going to be on the board, where I think it should be the fire chiefs that are running this because, to me, that's where CMed fails. But at any rate, you know, they are working out, I believe, some of the transmission problems and communication problems, and I know, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, there may be a tower that has to be switched.
Yes, and I think the town manager is gonna adjust that in the second floor.
Yeah, so that was one of the discussions, and, you know, actual lengthy discussion is, again, regarding a second dispatcher. And I believe that's pretty much everything, all the most important things. Item F, town planning, goals and subcommittee.
Committee met on September twenty-eighth. We're continuing to do research, and we're trying to look at some different innovative ways to meet some of the needs that we've identified. Our next meeting is on the nineteenth of October.
Thank you. Item G, Board of Education, Town Council Sub... A Communications Subcommittee. Has not met.
Has not met, yeah.
Did we get new dates... A date to... On the reschedule?
Not yet.
Okay.
Is it something we want to push till after the election, or just...
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Item five, town managers' report. Item A, CMed update.
Yeah, I want to thank Anthony Esposito for attending in my place, and basically gave me a report that one of the biggest items has been dealt with, which is the pension issue and winding up the organization. So they met their obligation and made that payment for the October one deadline. And of course, there's some internal issues that they have to do because the four towns didn't pay up, so the group had to... Has to fund, as I mentioned, if this came to pass, that we would have to pay out for those four to meet the obligation out of the reserve fund and then chase those four towns for those payments. So that has been settled in terms of the pension obligation as per the settlement. That issue is done, but left to chase the four towns. The other issue is just the transition and the communication. As the chief mentioned, there's an issue, one outstanding issue with some overtime and additional dispatcher that was in place during the twenty-day... Twenty-one day transition, so the group has to figure that cost out as to whether or not that's going to be borne by the old... As an official wind-down provision cost, or if it's gonna come out of the eight remaining towns that transitioned to AMR and now MedCon. And there's some question about the equipment and where these towers and equipment on these towers are going to be... Who's gonna have ownership? And I know the chief is working on with the group to improve the reception because that's an issue still ongoing in terms of some of the locations and some of the tower connections and so forth. So it's very much a work in progress. There wasn't a forum at the last meeting, so some of these issues had to be pushed off to the next meeting later this month, so I'll keep this on and hope to report back some positive news in next meeting.
Before we get off the town manager's report, because I don't see it anywhere else, where are we at with the... Our builder of choice for the center of town there?
Well, we're progressing with looking at DOT. I would like to do is get the negotiating team back together to finish out the contract, and they're working on their design. They had a meeting with DOT yesterday, and there's some guidance that they have from DOT with respect to that second cut off of one thirty-nine. They may... I think the indication is that they may want the developer, the town, to also look at moving the current entrance that exists on eighty more toward the middle of the property, away from twenty-two, not Hill, and move it toward the middle of the property. And I'm not sure how that's gonna play out, but that means that they've got to continue to rework their drawing and their layout if they can get one thirty-nine, and then they've got to move the entrance, or DOT's gonna make them move the entrance. So that's part of the process that's slowing down, trying to figure out what DOT will allow or permit, and they're making progress, but it kind of holds up how they lay out the buildings in terms of how they orient the traffic pattern through there. We're working on the possibility also that there may be funds available for the environmental remediation. But at this point, Carrie and I are talking with the state. They have a new round that's open for November sixteenth for remediation under brownfields, and they've kind of taken a liberal definition of brownfields, that this site may be eligible. But we're not sure if we would be ready for remediation, or if we'd have to do a grant or obtain grant funds for an assessment. We may be certainly eligible for assessment first to find out, and it's just a question of whether or not we roll that into this process or just leave it entirely up to the developer to handle the environmental issues and take it off the top, the price, or if we want to go through and look at grant funds from the state to do it in this process. So I'd like to bring the team together to discuss that and look at the language in the contract to figure how we want to... Decide how we want to do that.
So I know, you know, I wasn't here when they... When the council voted to choose them as the builder of choice, but...
We didn't choose them as a builder of choice.
Well, that's what the newspaper said.
No, we chose... We chose to negotiate.
No, we had a vote on...
They might have designated him as a preferred candidate.
We did.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Primarily because they were the one.
In order to move forward, you had to do that.
And they were the one and only entity to respond to our RP.
So again, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but you've got these people that basically do nothing from month to month, and they're tied up... They have the property tied up by apparently the vote that the rest of the council took, and, you know, I mean, the last thing... And, you know, I, I mean, the last thing I saw was they were going to give twenty thousand dollars and have it for a year. And if things went well, they'd have it for a year and a half and they either sell it or they wouldn't. But, I mean, so that's totally off the table. You guys voted to just give it to them for a year? There's no much they can?
Absolutely, no, absolutely not. First of all, they don't have the property tied up. What they have is our commitment that we will not negotiate with anyone else while we're negotiating with them. If we choose to terminate those negotiations, that's it. We list the property for sale, we create the Dudley Harrison Memorial Park, we do whatever.
No more memorials.
Whatever. The options are entirely ours. Right now, we are attempting to explore possibilities of going to contract with them. That contract, as you're aware, is not just twenty thousand for a year, it's twenty thousand and a few pennies more and it could be as much as two years. So that's not something that I intend to come back to this town council with and say, what do you guys think? It's just too long a period of time for too little money.
Well, I guess my thing is, when does this end?
Well. We either get them to the table or we get them whenever we choose. That's what I'm saying, bringing the, the group, the negotiating group together to say, to take the wish of the council here, it balls in our court to come back, they've submitted to us, you know, contract as, as they've drawn up. And just for, I'll take one issue, the twenty thousand, the council can say, you know, listen, we want this number and, and make it whatever number you want. Plus, Joe had mentioned last time around, the time, timeframes and timelines in terms of deliverables and so forth, there are a number of things in there beyond just, do we want, you know, housing and, and keep them to a, a housing component or whether we let that go, but certainly the open space and other, these other components. And how do we address the environmental issue? If, if, if we want to proceed with that, or you just let, let them do it and they take it off, deducted off the top of the acquisition cost?
Might add.
Those are the things we have to, we have to hammer out.
Well, plus, you know, part of the negotiation is, is these, you know, we need to find out what DOT is going to allow us to do as far as ingress and egress. And that affects whatever, our contract negotiation, you know, if it, and it affects if it's feasible for them to move forward as well or not. And it affects the value of the property.
Does it change the scope of the, of the, what they were going to do or change some of the things that they were?
They were, they, when we last met, John, you're, you're correct, they did say they were going to come back to us with some alternative design concepts, which I don't believe they ever have. Right, no, and that's because they needed to look at and, and hear from DOT and then then want to try and orient the parcel as to where they put the, if they break up the pieces or if they keep it in one area and how do they move it if they're going to, if DOT is going to make them move the entrance on eighty, which currently exists, and if they're going to give them a cut off of one thirty-nine. So now they've just got to do their best to get that to us and for us to go back and counter with what we want to see from our perspective, the council's perspective, what we want to see in that contract.
So this new round of grants that the state has for environmental cleanup, are, do they have to be in by November sixteenth?
Yeah, and, and.
Well, I'd hate to miss that cutoff of applying for something. Can we apply for it even while we're in negotiations with them?
Yeah, yes, of course, we can, we can apply. But as I said, I think the threshold question I've got and we should note tomorrow, I think we're, we're looking at whether or not we'd be eligible for remediation or if we're a step before that, which I think it might, might be the case because in order to be remediated, you need to have to know what you're dealing with and what the cost is. And we don't know that. We have an idea of what, what is there based on a phase two, but that phase two is so old that, you know, we don't know what the current conditions are. So I think we're back a step to assessment and I think there's up to two hundred thousand dollars in grant funds that you can get for the assessment phase two and, and study for that work. But again, that's, I don't, and I think that's a different round that comes later in January. So from a time, timing perspective, it may not be, it may not fit with how quickly this council wants to proceed. Or if the benefit is that you get not only the grant for the assessment and the work done and then you roll that into a abatement, but that'd be, that'd be another round. You're out.
So we have a, we have a, they have a formal application in for a driveway with the state?
No, it's just been, it's just been an informal sit-down that they were able to get with DOT and say, okay, listen, this is, this is what we're looking at.
So they haven't asked to do anything?
They haven't formally done anything, no.
Except they're using that as the reason that this, you know, DOT hasn't gotten back to them in their informal meeting, which will mean absolutely nothing.
Well, it's, it's guidance and that's, so as I said, it's, it doesn't mean anything until you put the application in, right? Plus, it doesn't, I mean, not all of this has to go through our local P and Z and, and through the, through the local process.
See, getting a curb cut on a state road isn't hard. You have a plan where you want it, you ask them if you can do it. If you meet the requirements and the sight line and the traffic and all that, they give it to you. If they don't, you change it. So I'm just not buying that there's this whole big holdup waiting for DOT to tell them what to do. So if you want to use that as an excuse for the other eight, go ahead, I didn't buy it.
I'm just telling you what they, what they tell me, I don't know, I've never submitted applications to DOT, but I would, you know, traffic studies I'm sure is involved and.
I'm sure there is. But again, you need a formal plan. Yeah, you just, yeah, anyone can call them up and, Dan can call them up and say, hey, I'm wondering where they put the driveway down there? And at the end of the conversation, what would he have? Nothing.
Yeah, I think we need the, the contract in, in place and I think we need to outline what the town wants in that contract and get them to the table to sign that and then see if we're going to, if we're going to come together on that, come to terms.
Well, they know what the town wants. I mean, I don't follow you.
We've got to reduce that in writing, we've got to.
Okay, so what's the, what's the, what's the holdup on your negotiating team?
It's just convenient, we can get together tomorrow, the next day, we can, whatever the schedule permits, John and, and Joe and myself to do that.
Mike, is there any way that council of government is going to help you with that grant?
Possibly, yeah, we can get some support from them potentially. But I, again, it's evaluating that grant and the timeline.
I understand that, but I think, I think they may be able to help you.
Sure.
Together.
I'm sure CCM too.
But I, I'd want to know that we can, we can follow an, a grant application that's going to run on a parallel, parallel process so that we're not, you know, indefinitely saying, okay, assessment this year for this fall with funds that come in the spring, we assess it and then, and then apply for remediation would be next fall in two thousand sixteen, if, if they keep a rolling, which I think they have.
Mike, you know the grant that we got to move Wallfield? We got grant money to move Wallfield from there to there?
Right.
Look at that grant because I believe there was money in there allocated to clean up what's over there.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that'd be interesting.
I don't know.
I can speak to that only with all those grant funds for that, we utilize them in the location of Wallfield. We, we, we pretty much tapped that one out.
Right, but what I'm saying is the information may be there already, what he's looking for.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Oh, to the extent of the remediation that needs to be done? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, well, we'll pull whatever valuable information is on there and we'll ask council of governments as well. We can do that and I'd be happy, I mean, I like, certainly, I think the.
They might streamline, you know?
Yeah, it makes sense to pursue it if we can get it. But again, I, I think in terms of timelines and how quickly the council wants to proceed, the grant process may not match up with what we want to do and how quickly we want to do that. But if it means.
Well, we don't want to hold off on that possibility, do we? I mean, whatever happens with that property, if we can get grants for the, you know, to offset that cost, we should do that.
Right, okay, well, if, you know, that's general consensus of the council, I think it makes sense if we can get both assessment and remediation funds.
It's going to have to happen either way.
Right.
If you can get on a fast track, if that's the way to fly. Do it, now, don't wait until you get all these things together.
Yeah, I mean, worst, worst case scenario is that the, there's no worst case scenario, you throw an application, it doesn't hurt to throw an application in.
But you could get, there's tons of firms that would come out and, and tell you what it would cost to remove everything that's bad. And, and, and that doesn't cost a lot of money. There's all kinds of firms that do it. Every house that I demo, I have to have it done, you know? I mean, it's, there's companies out there that do it, it's not a lot of money and.
Okay, so that's a good, that's a good point. So in the interest of time and, and separating the opportunity for an assessment versus an opportunity for remediation, if the town were to spend money to contract for a, a firm to go out and tell us what it is that's there, then we have.
Right.
Then we have a concrete number.
And most of those companies will give you a price to remediate it.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah.
We could have that and then throw that into the remediation for, for an application for remediation, yeah. And if, you know, we can, it'd be tight, but yeah, if we can get somebody in in October, you can get them done and they, they can get us a report by the November deadline, it might be.
The thing that would be slow is that, what they found, somebody found the oil where the gas tank was or gasoline or something, was that the?
Yeah, underground, there's some contaminants with either oil or gasoline or both. And to the extent, I don't know, that means you're taking out, I don't know how many cubic yards of dirt and fill, I don't know. But then you've got, you know, the buildings as well, then demolition and abatement, if there's lead and asbestos is all covered within that grant.
Right.
I mean, wasn't it either way that even if we somehow negotiated a contract with this preferred developer, we still were going to bear the cost?
Exactly. We're going to have to pay for it either way.
So, so I guess it makes sense to just move forward with it because if we get it done and we do somehow miraculously get a contract with them and that's where it ends up, it's just more money than now they don't have to do that and it's more money we can ask for the property.
Absolutely.
Or if we don't have a contract and we get it done, we do the demolition and everything else and now it's the piece of property that is totally remediated and you can sell it as is now.
Whatever, whatever happens, we're going to bear that cost, so let's try and offset that as much as possible.
Right, okay. I'll get that going then.
One other thing that's not on here, I just wanted an update from Kurt. Where are we on the one thirty-nine eighty with the DOT? I thought it was supposed to be September and now it's October.
It's supposed to be July, actually.
Right, and then they said September.
Now it's second or third week in October, is the latest week, you know?
I actually got emailed today, they're going to be out here in two weeks to look at the light and.
Just to look at or to work?
It's the radius and, and the.
McDonald's entrance.
McDonald's entrance that, that's the work that, the significant work that we're talking about. And that's, again, in, in a couple of weeks or so, they said they'd be out there to do that. They have that, what I was told, they have that in place with their contracted rare construction that put out for whatever reason, that's the latest that I heard. And, and the concern is certainly that it get done.
Before winter.
Is short a window as possible, so it's, you know, beginning to November, it's buttoned up and, and out. And they said, it shouldn't, they're telling me, they told me it should be two weeks to do it work.
And the traffic light on one thirty-nine and Twin Lakes Road that keeps going out?
That's working now.
They fixed it again today.
Well, right, they fixed it and then shortly after, because it keeps going on and off. Is that an issue that has been addressed or we just have to keep going with it?
Totally about it, I can follow up, it's still an issue. I mean, that's not linked to that project.
Right.
I'll certainly follow up with them, you know, on that. I mean, when you bring up lights too, I mean, just throw out two, it's one thirty-nine and Route eighty light, that's complaints about some delays and same thing on Nacho Road.
Right.
You'd ask DOT to look at some of the timing of that because there are some backups over there at certain times of day.
One, the one thirty-nine Twin Lakes traffic light is on flash mode during rush hour. As of today, it was working though, so, for the first time in two weeks, so hopefully that'll continue.
I just want to throw it out on here also, in that same area, Nacho Road, wasn't on the original DOT list, but I just got noticed that there was a pre-construction meeting for milling and paving of Nacho Road from Route eighty down to Route one.
So that coincides with all the Route one work in Bramford and Guilford?
Yeah, but, but it wasn't on the original list. I certainly, if, if you drive it, it's in terrible shape and it's something they really needed to do. I didn't think was to get done now, but if that's going to be a late season project, you know, at this point, there's a pre-construction meeting in October fifteen, so it looks like that work probably will go on in November. Once I, I'll send that meeting and report back on it, but it's a significant project that's been, a lot of work involved in that, but it's definitely necessary. If you ever drive the road, it's important to check.
Thank you. All right, community events and presentations. Sunday, the Bramford Fire Department and Police Department had their softball game, which I happened to stop in and I thought it was a nice day, nice camaraderie, a nice couple of fun round robin games between the Fire Department and Police Department. I believe they tied both games. Eight-eight.
I'll speak on that. As the, the mayor alluded to, this past Sunday, the Police and Fire Department, as you know, I had announced it at the last town council meeting, I got together and for a benefit fundraiser, played each other in a round robin softball tournament. I, I can tell you this, for those people that participated, both active and retired members of the Police Department as well as each of our three fire companies, it was a great day. For uniforms, hats, they all put money out of their own pocket to, to support this endeavor to make it really, really a first annual event. And I, it really just, I have to thank a couple people. Besides those people from the town council that stopped by to, to support our endeavor, Warren and the Park Rec Department for facilitating the use of the field, Public Works did a great job basically getting the field from a pretty wet condition from Saturday's rain to a very playing field on, on Sunday morning. Captain Lennon from the Fire Department, Captain Stabile, Captain Newbig, all did a a great cause getting their, their teams together as well as Officers Hannan, Officer Cunningham and Officer Ferrucci. Again, managing the, the Police Department and putting the, the teams together that a lot of people didn't think that this was going to happen. It did, we had a great day, families came down, we had some food trucks there and it was for a, a very worthy cause. And I can tell you, it will continue on, we already got people in line that want to sponsor the game next year. And just, just the camaraderie of the, those people that worked the streets every day was well exhibited and a great day had by all, so thank you for your support.
Thank you, chief.
Oh, by the way, the Fire Department did win. And mayor, there's a trophy behind you that'll be an exhibit in town hall to remind those that come in the door.
Wait a minute, does everybody get a trophy?
Fire Department.
Fire Department.
Your Bramford Food Pantry Charity Softball Game Champions donated by Guilford Sporting Goods.
Cool. Good job.
Everybody like to see it? Any other community events or presentations? Item seven, citizen statements, petitions and correspondence. Item A, resignations and appointments. Item A, resignation of David McMahon from the Board of Education.
I'm making motion to accept the resignation of David McMahon from the Board of Education.
I'll second that.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Armond?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item nine, unfinished business, discussion in action. Item A, I believe that's still tabled.
Yeah, I hope to have something for you on the twentieth.
Item B, resolution to adopt proposed ordinance two thousand fifteen dash two, amending chapter one nine-three, solid waste table near August eleventh, two thousand fifteen meeting.
That one should be ready for the twentieth as well, we've got to re-advertise and we'll have the public hearing ready for the twentieth.
Item C, review of the draft agreement with Malone and McBroom, Inc., MMI Design Services for Reconstruction of Selected Roads, Brently. for reconstruction of selected roads, Brently, Berthland.
Good evening. Including your package is a draft agreement prepared by Malone and McBroom with input from my office. Basically, I focused on the, you know, the scope of the work, the payment items and the like. And it's essentially very similar to what Malone and McBroom originally submitted with their proposal. I just want to maybe highlight a couple of changes that I asked for as a follow-up to our interview and selection process. They've added, they've added in there that the resident engineer during the final construction process should meet the approval of the town. We want to see what we have, we want to make sure we have someone duly experienced to be on the site and have some approval of that. We're going to add in two public informational meetings during the process, one early on to get input from residents with whatever their concerns are, things that they see out there, and one during the final design phase before they go out to bed to make sure they have everything. Schedule, that's a concern, we want to get this out as soon as possible. Our target is that we will advertise in, in March sometime. Their construction schedule gave them, they had six and a half months, that generally puts them to sort of mid-April if everything goes, as they targeted it. They've added in the wording in the contract, we will work with the town to accelerate the schedule to the extent practical in an effort to satisfy the town's construction advertised date at the end of March 2016. And then in terms of fees, overall, the general fee, the bottom line fee is essentially the same, what they've added in is there are items, survey, there may be some areas that we can, if Fran and I take a ride with the engineers, we don't need detail on some areas, we can actually save some money. So we left provisions to save money on, on the survey. Let's see, a bidding assistance becomes a not-to-exceed number and based upon hourly reimbursable cost. The goal would be to minimize that. The way it's worded, there's potential for savings during the construction process. It's budgeted at the full, for the full extent that was originally proposed, but with the ability to, with Fran and, with input from Fran and myself to sort of whittle down some of the work effort in some areas to make sure, if we don't need it, we don't have to do it so long as it does not have an impact on the integrity of the final product. The other thing too is there's some comments from John, the Town Attorney's Office regarding the standard terms and conditions, things that John's office said that should be excluded and we've had a conversation with the Malone and McBroom, they've agreed to eliminate those items for the contract. That would have to, file come back to John just to verify it, but they've agreed to that. And again, the concern is, let's get to, we'd like to get this going as soon as possible because there's, there's limited time to get this out to be for construction in the spring. And any questions or comments, I'm certainly open to them, but I, but I think, I said, they've, the changes they made were beneficial to us in terms of potential cost savings. They acknowledge the time issue that came up during our interview process and they'd certainly like, they're going to do everything they can to try to meet that timeframe, but there's, there's a certain amount of work that has to be done there to get it done.
So Kurt, when they, and I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but when, when we interviewed them, I believe they had the gentleman that was going to be their inspector in the room and I, you know, he was, I don't know, I didn't, you know, he wasn't a young kid.
That's right.
Had a lot of experience.
That's right. He was a local resident as well.
Okay. Why don't we have his name in here as our resident inspector? Because that was part of the reason that I voted to go forward with it.
And I had that exact conversation, I mean, because you never know what, I mean, potentially he could be-
I agree with that, but-
What we put in there that we need to see and approve-
You have, that you're approved, that the approval is there.
The town has to approve it.
But what we don't want-
Right.
They have to start somewhere, but not in North Bramford, you know, we don't want the kid that just graduated with construction management.
Absolutely, absolutely not. We want a senior-
We don't want that.
We want someone with a years of experience.
We want this guy that he's been around and the contractors are not going to have a pipe that ends nowhere.
That's correct.
Is there any reason why his name was left out?
Pardon me?
Is there any reason?
Well, I think they're concerned, you know, if you put a name, that person could leave. I mean, then what do you do? They brought that person and the whole conversation-
They brought him to the interview.
They brought him in the interview and say, you know, this is, you know, someone we have to be here. The concern, again, someone could leave a firm, we want to make sure whoever's there, that person could leave the firm, I mean, that's always a possibility. We want to make sure we have someone that has senior experience that's not, again, the person that came out of school, graduated from school a couple of years ago. We want to see the years of experience.
And that's what we had with this guy.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and, and the discussion was, that's what we want. I mean, that's what I told them, but I don't think they are willing to put anybody's name in there at this point because somebody could potentially leave.
Dan, I'm leaving this one on you.
Kurt, where it says here, standard terms and conditions?
Yep.
Item one, method of payment.
Those items from John's office, what he, whether, were crossed out and deleted too-
Right.
They've agreed to that.
Okay. And then it says here, lump sum fee price and fixed price contracts will be invoiced on a percent complete basis as determined by MMI.
Well, they're going to submit an invoice, we're going to have to look at it in terms of, we're going to need a schedule of values upfront and make sure, generally the-
So they should be billing off their schedule of values.
Right.
Right.
And, and again, from my perspective, yeah, we want to, we want to hold back a little. We want, we're not, by the time they bill us, they should in reality be a little bit ahead in terms of the work they've done. I mean, we should always be holding something more than the value of what's remaining.
So, I certainly, you know, like the firm, but, and I'm going to have to defer to John on this, but you know-
Yeah, that's my question.
I don't know how many things I've sat on here, whether it's, you know, the great, you know, Newman Architects going to do the school, and so you get these guys that have a lot of salt and pepper in their hair and 150 years between two of them have experience and they've been written up in, you know, all the architectural magazines and they come in here with their show. And we get the kid that just got out of school that doesn't have a clue about building anything and that's who we get.
Right, so-
So I have, I, I mean, if you're going to, to me, if you're going to, part of your team during the interview was this guy, why can't we at least start with this guy? And then if he gets taken ill or moves on to something else or retires, so be it, but I have a real hard time with him not putting that name in there.
Yeah, we can, can we put his name in there barring any unforeseen circumstances that would eliminate him?
He was part of their show.
I think what you're hearing is that the council is relying on this person as a, as an integral part of this integrity of this project.
He sold, he sold their product.
Well, and-
So I think what he just said- He did sell, he was a part of the sales team.
That's, that's the product that we're buying, we want him to be a part of that product.
Yeah, I, I think you can, if their concern for not putting it in there is he may quit or he may have a disaster occur to himself.
We certainly understand that.
Yeah, right.
That, we can write language about that, but as far as having this job as his job or at least his top priority, absent unforeseen circumstances-
Right.
Extraordinary unforeseen circumstances, it's important to the council.
And I get that, and that was part of the conversation, because it came up during the interview, the whole process.
Why don't, you could, you, I can drop a brief attendant to this or he can call me in the morning.
Okay.
Do we want to put something about the replacement should also have-
At least an or equal.
Experience-
That's, we're looking for experience.
If that person exists, that person may not exist.
Well, the experience level, so that you don't, if that person happens to leave for unforeseen circumstances, that they don't put the rookie on the job.
Of senior, of senior experience, yeah.
So that-
Because that's what he was.
Right.
He was a guy that had seen it all.
And, and, and there may be someone just as good.
I totally agree.
We want to make sure that we get somebody to that caliber.
But I think by leaving it wide open, we get the kid that just graduated.
Oh, we do have-
And, and again, they got to start somewhere.
We can, we can terminate the contract on 30 days' notice, so if this-
And they're a good firm, so I don't want to, it's just that with what we just went through on the roof, you know, here's our next deal and-
All right. And again, if I were, I get, the motion that, at the September meeting was go with Malone and McBroom, subject to finalizing the contract.
I mean, even John, they put in there that it's their intent to use this guy.
Right.
Or something like, I mean, I don't know, but I mean-
Not a problem, I mean, it's not a problem for me to have that conversation and to tell them, that's a keystone of this agreement for the council.
From a time point, point of view, if John and I can work it out with Malone and McBroom, I'd like to just move it along.
I agree.
Yeah.
Without going back to the-
I agree.
Right.
Absolutely, if you guys, if you guys can feel comfortable that they understand what we want for an inspector.
Because the discussion was, it wasn't in a minute, but what, but I remember the discussion saying, we'd like to take a look at the contract before you go forward with it, so that's, you've seen the scope and everything, if that's the issue, as long as we have the blessing to work with John on it and make sure it's in there and get this in go, because again, timeframe is the other consideration, we want to get this ready to go as soon as possible in the spring to try and take advantage of better dip prices. I, I'm going to throw it out there now, the state has so much work out there, you know, that's a concern that, you know-
Right.
We may be looking at different numbers in the spring already, just from the fact that the state's pumping a lot of, lot of-
And the state has already told all the guys that they're going to spend more money paving next year. There's no, there's no paving crews now.
Exactly, so I mean, that's something we will have to deal with in the spring and take a look at and based upon the best information, we'll have to make a decision, you know, how we perceive with it. The ideal time is when you have a project and things are real slow and you get it in there, you get good prices. We don't know what prices we're going to be looking at next year, but-
The only good thing is the state is spending a lot of money next year on pavement.
Right.
So the rebuilding of our roads and stuff is a different contractor.
Yeah, but, but he's, there's a lot of paving involved in it as well.
Right.
It's the drainage work that'll, we should do pretty good on. The other work, I don't know, but we won't go until we get to that point.
There'll be a lot less people on the roads.
So, okay.
Kurt, before you sit down, I may have missed it, but I suspect you anticipated this, the contract we voted on is $149,000, but there's $75,000 worth of potential inspection fees in addition?
It's, it's an hourly basis.
I see that, but I mean-
Yeah?
Did we discuss that? Were you anticipating that it would be as much as $75,000 additional?
I hadn't done the math, but that's, if you do the, if it's four months inspection, and that's, that's a subject of authorization. We were not authorized on the $75,000 at this point, but depending, if you put a person out there full-time, we could go with, we're going to have, we're going to have to have that discussion when we get to final land, full-time or can we do it for a little bit less, not so full-time.
So we're saying it's four months of full-time work at $110 per hour for this-
That's a budgetary number.
Mr. Salt and Pepper.
That, that's a, you know, that's a number, eight hours a day for a month.
See, here's the thing, Joe, and it, it's expensive to have an inspector there, but you have to remember, in the White Hollow sewer area, which is what, you know, we're fixing some of that, when that was put in, they went right through the contractor, must have had, you know, limited or no inspectors, and they went right through our drainage pipes and let them that way. Because there was no inspector out there. And we find it out later on that the detriment that hasn't hauled water, have taken water is because the pipe goes nowhere.
I just didn't get it, that it could be 50% of the contract for additional inspection costs. And as I'm looking at their breakdown, they're saying fee to be negotiated, we suggest you budget $75,000 for full-time inspection over four months with a maximum hourly rate of $110. So one, it tells me we don't have a firm deal on inspection costs. Two, it clearly tells me you don't have a firm deal on Mr. Salt and Pepper, since he must have a set rate and they're saying it's going to be negotiated with a maximum rate of $110 bucks an hour. And three, wow, that's a lot of money.
Inspection is expensive, I mean, generally I see contract administration inspection, a lot of times that number is very similar to a design number. There's $30,000 in the air for contract administration, which put in there could be reduced if it's full-time inspection as well, but inspection, it's a, it's strictly a man-hour, someone being out there full-time.
But also, Joe, it depends on the contractor we get. If we happen to get a contractor that is a known entity and, you know, you can inspect less, or the inspector, we, we want to leave it open that the inspector say, you know, these guys do everything right, I can look at them Monday, Wednesday and Friday and then Tuesday and Thursday next week or something, mix it up, but-
And I'm pointing out there, they have $30,000 was their budget for contract administration. There's a note in there that that could be reduced, $15,000 if you have full-time inspection. Depending on, I mean, what they've told me is the level, you know, when you have a, the experienced full-time inspector out there, that cuts down on the office work and they can save, they'll save it on the contract administration part of it. That, that person will be doing the same thing. But yes, construction inspection, it's, it's a big number.
This is not a shock to you?
No, well, the overall, no, and once, once you multiply it out, again, I think as Al said, you can save on the resident inspection, you get the junior engineer, but you're getting what you're paid for. You're getting somebody that doesn't have the, the seasoned experience to make decisions, to keep an eye on the contractor, to make sure we don't have those problems down the road.
And think how expensive those problems are down the road.
Yeah, I mean, and, and that person there is trying, is making sure everything is done in accordance with the contract specifications and documents, and able to interpret and through experience, make good decisions.
Thank you, Kurt.
Do we need to vote to let you go forward with this?
We voted back in September.
Oh.
But again, it came back, I wanted to see the scope and for the real questions and if there are any comments, ask them or we'll follow up.
Item 10, new business, discussion in action. Item A, review of debt service.
So I asked, I asked if it was put on because I feel strongly about it. So the first thing I'm going to say is that I want to apologize to Marie for being mean to her with what she wanted to do with the reduction of debt service because that was wrong. I do respect you, Marie. You bring a lot to the table, you work hard at it, and so I apologize for that.
Thank you.
So having said that, somehow, and for me sitting here for all these years, and I'm going to drag Anthony into this because I, because I, I can see him at a meeting saying, you know, our debt service has been about $3 million a year, it's going to go to about six, maybe that's the right number, it's been here a long time, but that was, I don't know, '06, '07, before this stagnant grant list and everything else that's happened. So I've been struggling with, you know, I mean, I, I enjoyed the years when we were on the council here and, you know, the grant list went up a mill every year and we had money, we could pay for the board of ed and we could pay for fire trucks and everything else. We have been financially strapped because $5.5 million a year is more money than this town can afford for debt service. So, you know, I know I brought before you guys, you know, trying to control how much we bond, but I almost think if we control our debt, and I know that any council can vote to undo what we do, but if we have a serious discussion, and this is too big for us to decide- us to decide tonight and then one more meeting, but at least if it's on the floor and we have, Anthony comes up with some magic formula, what can North Branford afford and still maintain our buildings, our roads, our equipment? You know, what is, what is that number? Because I, I, I do not think it's five and a half million, and so I do not want to see us say, oh, it drops and we can stay at five and a half million, because all of us know that we've been sitting up here since it was five and a half million, trying to figure out how to make ends meet. And, uh, you know, so I, I think our opportunity is to say, okay, it's going to drop, and maybe when it drops, that's where we are, but whatever it drops, instead of bonding more money right away to go with that, that money, holding taxes the same, you know, if this thing says it drops, uh, one point seven million in, in seventeen, eighteen, if you leave taxes the same, you've got one point seven million to start taking care of everything that we're supposed to be taking care of, instead of borrowing more money right away. And you can borrow some money, but there has to be a happy medium between three million in debt and six million in debt that this town can, that we can afford, until we get some big business or, I mean, the poor guys building spec houses in town can't even sell them. I mean, there's just nothing going on in town, and, um, and when you look at Michael's last week's weekly report, see, I had, uh, that stuff I passed out to you guys, I had a couple of rainy days last week, so I, I actually read the, it started with what Dan sent out about, um, a, a school, a school ranking or something, and, uh, so I, I looked at a few things, but I actually looked at, you know, when you look at the map, uh, put out by CCM that he put out here, you know, I mean, North Branford's pretty impressive. We have very little poverty, you know, very little. The only town that has less poverty than us in our surrounding area is Madison, you know, and I, I've said for years, we pay our taxes, you know? Um, so we have a great community, except you look on the one map for economic development, and we're the one blank. And probably it's Tilcon and the Water Company that really puts the screws to us, but we don't have ninety-one, ninety-five, Route One, Route Five, or a rail system. And when, and when you scroll down to like page ninety of the ninety-three pages Michael sent us, you know, there was a map there of economic development, and, and, and we had zero chance. So, you know, that's an uphill battle that we have. Um, you know, but they had the different colors of where this future development and stuff, and future business and everything was going, there wasn't one shade in North Branford. Um, and that's logistically, you know, so, so I don't think that we're going to solve this tonight. I just wanted to put it on the agenda, because, you know, I may not be here in, in two more meetings, and, um, but as a council, I think that we should look at it. So, I don't know if anyone else wants to add something tonight, or whether Anthony wants to have, give us any ideas of what you can look for and.
Well, it, it's funny you bring that up, because Mike and I had a telephone conference with Moody's today as it relates to our upcoming bond sale, and, uh, the, we're looking at changing the structure of the bonds that we're going to go out with now. Instead of doing twenty-year bonds, we're going to go fifteen-year bonds, and that move alone will save us about seven hundred thousand dollars over the life of the debt service. We have the capacity and our number's going down, let's take advantage of it. So, a twenty-year, a twenty-year bond versus a fifteen-year bond will save us some money. We also had the discussion regarding the, the drop in seventeen, eighteen, and the subsequent drop in twenty-four, twenty-five. The worst thing you want to do in a budgeting perspective is do this with your budget. You want to keep somewhat of a level budget. So, maybe of that one point seven reduction, maybe you bring it down a few hundred thousand dollars to benefit the taxpayers, but you take that extra million dollars and you put it into a reserve, and you pay for cash for public works trucks, you pay for cash for Board of Education things, and you pay for cash for fire trucks. So, you're living, say, at a five million dollar number, pick a number.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, your, your debt service is down maybe a three point seven, that extra, that delta you're putting into a cash reserve, and you're paying for things cash, avoiding the bonding, bonding costs and lease purchasing costs. So, there is some, some magic that has to be worked, and again, it's, it depends on the flavor of the council. You know, what, what's your appetite for bonding? Do you, I don't, the projects are out there. I mean, we've all known the projects are out there. Do we, do we proceed with the projects? Do we not proceed with the projects, do them to a smaller, smaller scale? There's ways you can, you can work it out to, I, I understand what you're saying about the debt service being high, and you're right, lived it, we lived three million dollars, that was our number for twenty years, our debt, our, you know.
Yeah.
Three million was, was our number, three, three point three, we lived that number, and then you did the school.
But also, when it was three, too, I mean, at least the first ten years I was on the council, our grant list grew at least a mill a year.
Right. But then, then we, then you, you know, built the school, you built two libraries, you bought a chunk of land, doesn't come out of the sky, so we had to pay for it, and that's why we had that.
I, I agree we had to pay for it.
We had that lived in, in our debt service. Now, we're on the downside now. So, the numbers you referenced about being high in debt per capita, we're at the lowest now going in than we've been in the last five years. Our numbers are really improving. Bottom line is, there, there is, you know, there is wiggle room to say, okay, instead of taking that whole one point seven and, and rebonding it or, or do it all as savings, look at the, the stability of your mill rate, because something is going to pop up, whether it's the school or the police station or something.
Absolutely.
And all of a sudden, you're going to say, okay, whoop, one and a half mill increase this year? People are going to, you know, go nuts at that happen. So, again, the, the most level you can keep your, your expenditures and your mill rate, the better off you're going to be. So, we could work those numbers as the time comes, seventeen, eighteen comes around, and say, okay, how much can we actually afford? Again, what's the market conditions going to be? What's the interest rates going to be? You know, it's too far, you know, to know right now, but there, there is some flexibility, shall we say, and not taking that whole one point seven as savings, not taking the whole one point seven as more debt service, somewhere some happy medium, so you can give taxpayers some relief, but then start paying with some things with cash and, and save on the interest costs on that side. But we are, we are working on it. Again, we had a telephone conversation with Moody's today, and, uh, you know, very favorable conversation, they liked our, our result of operations. We had positive operations twenty fifteen, not audited yet, but, uh, again, if you look back at last February, March with the winter, I, I was panicking. I thought for sure we were going to have been in the red for the first time in twenty-five years. And, uh, you know, two years in a row, the, Mike's spending freeze paid off, and running up with positive operations, we had a little bit better revenue than we thought, expenditure side came in well, and all those things, you know, positive factors. So, Moody's was, Moody's was very happy with our rating phone call today, and, uh, again, we're going to, again, probably shorten that duration of these new bonds from fifteen, from twenty to fifteen years, and that'll save us seven hundred thousand dollars over the life of the bond.
Okay.
Which we think is a pretty, you know, pretty decent move. We have the capacity to do it, and so it, it'll, it'll still allow us capacity to do other projects.
Right.
It's not going to totally absorb that, that, that delta that's in there, so there is an opportunity to address the other concerns that we know are in the community, and we can't just keep turning our eyes on them forever, we got to, you know, tackle them eventually.
Okay.
And like I said, even like we talked about the, you know, we mentioned Kurt kind of, you know, phoning around today, if we had this million dollars of cash every year, and Kurt and Fran have been crying for how many years that the roads, we've been, we've been shortchanging them.
Right.
So, if we gave them more money every year to keep the roads up to snuff, we'd be back on track. We were back in ninety-one, back with a decent road program. So, you know, there's, the money's, we, we can spend the money, you know, eighty different ways, it's just a matter of being prudent about it, and I, I agree with you.
And the only other thing I'll say to speak to, uh, Marie's, um, presentation is, you know, I'm not, I'm not stupid, I don't want to spend eighty million dollars on a high school, but I understand that it needs to be updated. So, I think that, again, this next council needs to sit with the Board of Ed and come up with a plan. And, and then we got to, you know, we got to come up with a plan and stick to it, and if it's, you know, in my mind, I would rather see us go and say, okay, here's the building, here's the footprint, it has a new roof, let's do the bathrooms, and then the next year you do, I don't know, whatever's next, you know, do the locker rooms, then do a wing, the add air conditioning. But again, being able to use this, our, our, our extra million dollars to either, you know, encumber it again with bonding for something, or be able to pay for some of this stuff as you go. But anyway.
Well, I think, I think what we're trying to do on the committee is, is get a lot more answers, too, as to how we can get help financially. I mean, as I said the other night, when I see, you know, Ansonia gets fifty thousand dollars to do something, like, you know, for grants, we need to be, that's one of the things we're doing, too. What, what's out there to help us? We're reaching out again to our state legislatures, legislators, and also, you know, the whole thing with the police department, can't forget that piece either, and we're looking at that, and we're looking at, we're going to go visit some towns instead of just building a new building, renovate. So, again, we are trying and working hard. We know, we have the needs identified, we're looking now at different options to do some of that work. We're not giving up, you know, and we realize that we can't, you know, we can't do everything, but we, we will try to look for options.
All right, item B, reproach to two thousand fifteen sixteen capital improvement plan to planning and zoning commission for review.
This is just the, uh, step in the process. The CIP has not changed from what you saw in your budget book, number-wise, there was some movement around that Kurt had Fran with, it was some of the road money, but again, it's that five million dollars of the bonding money, uh, that still remains constant in that, in that bond fund column, the four point three million for roads, uh, three fifty towards the fire training facility, and three fifty towards the memorial field renovations, coupled with the news that Mike got today, that'll actually give us the funds to perform that project a hundred percent as we plan to. This basically is just sending to P and Z for an eight twenty-four referral, and then it'll come back to you folks for ultimate approval.
Just, just an aside, too, uh, planning and zoning in the last couple of years has, uh, has raised some concern that they get it at the eleventh hour, and, you know, they want to approve it, they don't have a chance to be involved in the process. So, this year in June, when the council first adopted the budget, I gave them preliminary numbers back at that point, I gave them basically a rough draft of this, so if you have anybody on planning and zoning that you talked to, they did see this already once, they had a look at it back in June, so historically, they're right, historically, they get it, uh, there's not much, they really have the opportunity to weigh in on it, they basically bless it and send it back to you folks, uh, but this year I listened to their concerns, and I did send it to them actually in June, so they have an opportunity to digest a little bit of this stuff.
But we also have invited them to our budget workshops and our budget deliberations so that they can hear our conversations and have input into when we are discussing CIP.
Correct.
So, it's not that we've left them, based on conversations that they had the previous year, we did that this year, and I don't really recall seeing any of them at those meetings, so.
Right, I'll move to resolve that the North Branford Town Council instruct the Treasurer and Finance Director to forward the capital improvement plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, section eight twenty-four, and bring back to this body, if I'm received their action.
Move second. Move by Counselor.
Second.
Fawnin. Seconded by Counselor Arman. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Arman.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Item C, meeting schedule for two thousand sixteen.
I just have one question, in November, um, why are the meetings not two weeks apart? They're only a week apart.
Oh, yeah, I noticed that.
And it's not an election year next year, so shouldn't it be the first and the fifteenth?
Exactly, yeah, there's.
Okay.
Typo there, so, and it's, it's just draft, and if you don't like, I mean, you feel free to do whatever you like with the schedule, this is just a starting point draft, uh, so November should be the fifteenth, second meeting, because it is an odd year and there's no election. All right, even here. Are there any other dates we need to move, or, we're keeping with the July, one in July, one in August?
And one in December, right?
Right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, schedule of meetings as amended.
Second.
Move by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Arman.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Item D, revise two thousand fifteen sixteen lease purchase agreement for fire rescue twenty-two.
Yeah, and the motion that, uh, you guys acted on at your June meeting, the amount that I had in there for rescue twenty-two was three hundred and fifty thousand. Fire Commission actually approved three hundred and seventy-five thousand, regardless of those two numbers, the actual, the lowest responsible bid came in at three hundred and eighty-three thousand four fifty-six.
Eighty-four hundred.
So, I need the, TD Bank is willing to alter their amount of their payment schedule, assuming that the town council alters the motion to reflect the new three eighty-three four fifty-six number.
That's how it'd be eighty-four, eighty-five hundred, eleven, two, six, or something.
Yeah, yep.
I'd like to make a motion, be hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council pursuant to the results of bid number five, two thousand fifteen dash sixteen, hereby authorizes Michael T. Paulus, Town Manager, and Anthony P. Esposito, Junior CPFO Treasurer, to sign revised lease purchase documents with TD Equipment Financing, and furthermore revises the appropriation for the replacement of rescue twenty-two to three thousand, three hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Second.
Move by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Arman.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
So, may I ask, so we are replacing, uh, rescue twenty-two, do we sell what's in place now, or what happens with the apparatus that we have now?
Danny, bring up a good, a good point. The vehicle that we're replacing is a nineteen eighty-nine, uh, vehicle, and, um, in the past, we've have recycled some of our vehicles into other departments, so I intend to have a conversation with Fran tomorrow and see if there's a future use as a, uh, a vehicle that he can use to support his operation.
Put a plow on it.
Yeah.
Next.
Thank you, Chief.
Item E.
Yeah, if we could skip that and go right to, I think, executive session and then come back, that'll be the last item.
Item eleven, citizen statements and petitions.
Members of the Town Council, as a fire chief, I, I truly believe that, um, being able to provide information to the Town Council, whether it be in the budget presentations or during course of the year, um, is really an effective tool to show what we do. Um, there's been, uh, a lot on our, our plate in the past couple of years. I have to say that had it not been for our acquisition of about one point four million dollars in assistance to firefighters grant program funds, um, we would find it very difficult to operate the fire department for the town of North Branford. Uh, I listen to the budgetary concerns and, and debt that the town is attempting to catch up on over the next years, uh, the fire department will have some needs as, as time goes on, and I always make it, uh, my best judgment to look at what the federal government's key programs are that they focus on when they give these grants out on an annual basis. And we've been lucky since, um, two thousand and five to get a good share of federal funds. Uh, being the town size we are, our match is about five percent. Um, so for very little dollars, we've captured a lot of money that's replaced a lot of equipment that otherwise this town would have to provide. Um, so with that said, uh, I just want to keep you up to date on a couple, a couple, uh, topics here. Recently this week, uh, with the RWA, a number of hydrants have been put in place, uh, east on Route eighty, past the White Wood Road, a new hydrant has been, uh, put in and is now available for water service, and customers on the far side of the street, I, here, are going to hook into, um, the water mains. Uh, today, six additional hydrants went into service on Middletown Avenue, south of Village Street, and just the other day, four additional hydrants went in on Village Street, um, east, moving towards Clintonville Road. So, that project that actually caused this.
So that project that actually caused this to take place down in North Haven will get their, their water main extended, and we have benefited from that. Additionally, I just want to bring you up to date on the fire training facility. So you hear it from the horse's mouth. So this tactical fire training center that is being constructed to the rear of the Public Works facility is more than just a smokehouse, much more than just a smokehouse. So just to keep everybody on the same page, this is the process that is taking place. We discussed with one of many vendors that are available to build a pre-engineered steel fire training facility throughout the US. We met with them locally, we involved our commissioners, we involved the company captains. We decided on a model that would be most beneficial for the town. We went through the planning and zoning process, we obtained our planning and zoning permit. The lot was cleared, a site survey was done, soil testing was done. Based upon the soil testing, the foundation design was put into place, the, the foundation plans were purchased. We recently went out to bid, there were two bidders for the, the foundation process. Public Works has been doing a great job in clearing the property behind there. Just today, they, they made significant headway. And it's also benefiting some of the other projects that Public Works is working on because of soil removal. The building material, because this is a sole source project, the building material has been ordered. It's scheduled for delivery the week of December 8. And later, in the next week and a half, we have bid opening for the erection of the fire training facility. Because it's a sole source, only six vendors throughout the United States are allowed to bid on this. And we're keeping our fingers crossed that the most responsive bidder is, is one that may be involved in a project one town over up in Wantiford. We hope that that works to our benefit. With that said, it becomes a regional asset. Most fire departments throughout the United States today don't act on their own. It's impossible. We base our operations not only on what our local assets are, but what our future needs are in any particular incident response, and that is through good mutual aid cooperation. So we practice with our mutual aid partners on a regular basis. So that leads me to my final point, and that is, on the 14th of this month, we started a new firefighter recruit training program that encompasses North Haven, North Branford, East Haven, and Durham. We have about 30 members in the class. We rotate the classroom sessions between the Mono East Firehouse over in North Haven on Cunipiac Avenue and our facilities here. And as soon as our training, tactical training facility is up and running, a lot of the practical work will take place on-site as well. So again, it serves a multitude of purposes, and I can't tell you how excited our membership is. So manage, from a part-time manager's standpoint, managing four stations, 17 pieces of rolling apparatus, and 125 people, that's a task in itself. Probably the largest department in town. So when you look at that and what we provided them through the inception of this tactical fire training facility, the rewards to them are going to be astronomical. And you'll see the benefit for years to come, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further statements? All right, can I have a motion to go into executive session? A, CGS-1-206A, discussion concerning appointment of recreation supervisor. Second.
I'd also like to invite Lauren Monroe and, as Director and the candidate. I'd like to invite Lauren in.
I can't make the motion.
Sit.
So moved.
Sit.
Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Arman.
Wait a minute, I wasn't paying attention. What do we, what do we vote now?
We're going into executive session and inviting Lauren and the candidate.
I thought we were going to...
Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.